Hi, good evening, everyone. Sorry for the delay. Welcome to our The Little Compton Policy Subcommittee, February 18th, 2022. If everyone could please stand for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, first up on our policy agenda, 2.1 is the mask policy. I know that on the agenda, public input is underneath all of the policies. We will be allowing public discussion throughout the meeting. Use your raise hand feature. We're going to be allowing three minutes because there's quite a few attendees. We want to make sure everyone gets a chance to speak. We are running a timer here. We'll try to give you a 20-second. Notice that you have 20 seconds last, but at three minutes, you'll just be cut off, just so you know. Okay. So the mask policy, we received some information today from the Rhode Island Department of Health with some metrics on what they believe is safe for schools. When it is safe for schools to remove the mask mandate. And it's based on community spread. And with when the community spread is considered substantial or high, which is with more than 50 cases per 100,000, they consider that substantial or high. And that is when they're recommending that schools keep a universal mask mandate. Currently, Rhode Island is in the high transmission state. We have 196.6 cases per 100,000. So with all this information, this is brand-new data out today. I would recommend that we keep the mask mandate and agree to review the data next month. What do you think, Hannah?
I agree. I'd like to see how it rolls out in other schools before we make a decision here, how no masking or mask optional goes. And we still have a very low vaccination rate among our population and among our students, which is really troubling to me personally. So I agree with that.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions or concerns about this?
An audience hand. An audience hand.
Okay.
The username is Shannon. If you can unmute yourself and state your name and address, please.
Yep, Shannon Mitchell, 41 Old Main Road, Little Compton. So next month, when you say as in March next month?
We could do it by the end of March. I mean, in our, in the current, in the current policy, we have, we had that we would review the policy by the, by the end of March, and we're reviewing it in February. So we could, we could just keep the policy the same and review it by the end of March.
And then the state comes back and says that March 7th is what normal other schools, like sister school Portsmouth is doing. March 7th, the, it's optional mask, which I wonder what their population per 100,000 people of people that had COVID. I mean, Little Compton is, what's the population now, 3,500, 3,600?
I don't have that information in front of me.
Well, if you have this, you have the stat that you just gave me, that's kind of.
That's the state. That is the state's community spread.
So you're saying that the population of Little Compton right now, population in Portsmouth is way, way higher. They're lifting the mask, but Little Compton kids, there's 12 in a class. We're going to keep these kids masked?
That's what we're recommending.
Okay, well, this is what I recommend. I'm having a hard time getting my children to want to go to school at this point. Jack McKinnon and Lori Dias sends me out a truancy report every single week. So as a parent, it is extremely difficult to have my child want to learn with a mask on still. And definitely, my eighth grader, which is pretty savvy to what's going on in the world, for me to constantly pitch him every single morning. So I'm wondering, and I know a lot of people on the committee, you guys don't have children that go to school besides Mike. But do you understand how difficult it is for these parents in our community to constantly tell their children that they have to put a mask on to go to school? And I have to sell them on going to school? It's, that shouldn't be the case. These kids should want to go to school. There's so many. I'm so frustrated that this is where we're at. I read articles that the school committee puts out, or I guess Hannah puts out there. There should be repercussions regarding people that don't want to vaccinate. This isn't what we're doing in this world anymore. Like, we have to get back to what's right for the, with the kids. You don't want people to go into your school that aren't vaccinated.
You have 10 seconds.
Whatever. It's not like my 10 seconds are going to make a difference at this point. You clearly have your mind made up.
Hannah?
Um, I'd just like to clarify that I haven't put out any article that says anything contrary to what we've all talked about in public meetings and what I've stated in public meetings, just so everyone's clear. Thank you.
And I, I think this might be a good time for me to say that no one has had their mind made up. This has been, despite what a lot of people think, this has been a very difficult decision. This is, we're always looking at data. We're always listening to parents. We listen, listen to parents on all sides of this issue. Every day. So it is by no means an easy decision, and by no means does anyone have their mind made up. Do you have any special order you want to? Are they in order?
Down here?
Yeah, sure.
Stephanie Kavanaugh, if you can unmute yourself and state your name and address, please.
Hi, Stephanie Kavanaugh, 63 Old Stone Church Road, Little Compton. So in the spirit of throwing data out there, as of February 16th, 100 Rhode Island individual schools have switched to mask choice. According to the RITO pre-K through 12 data, Little Compton does have a lower case rate than 83% of those schools as of February 6th. And our numbers have only improved since then. So rather than looking at the statewide data, which is affected by the bigger cities, Providence, Central Falls, Pawtucket, areas like that, we should be looking at specifically the Little Compton data. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Up next is Christine Olivera. If you can do the same, unmute yourself and state your name and address, please.
Yes, Christine Olivera, 49 Long Highway. Um, I've said it at these meetings before, and I'm here tonight saying it again. The fear mongering needs to stop. The burden of COVID never should have been put on the backs of our children. Masks do not work. They're, they're wearing paper cloth masks. They're not wearing properly fitted N95s. Done, period. We all know that. That's a fact. Not only do masks not work, but they are negatively impacting children. Our children are suffering because of financial gain, and that is totally unacceptable. It is long past the time to allow parents to choose what is best for their children. We know what's best for them, not any of you. A Rhode Island Superior Court judge ruled masking is causing irreparable harm to our children, period. Now, we have to cross-correct that. The only acceptable decision going forward is to allow for parent choice and never mandate masks on our children again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next, Stephanie Dion, if you can unmute yourself and state your name and address.
Hi, yeah, this is Justin Dion, 24 Amy Hartpath. I could have seen this being effective maybe in the very, very beginning when nobody knew how this was affecting children. I mean, maybe a month or so in, we kind of knew it wasn't affecting kids like it was affecting adults. But two years in on this pandemic, the, 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 the data is in now. There have been 7,076,420 cases, documented cases for age, kids age 5 to 15. Of those 7,076,420, there have been 605 deaths, 605 deaths. Y'all can check my math, but that's 99.9915 percentage of kids survive this. Why? What is, I'm trying to figure out what y'all are so afraid of. Can anybody answer me? What, what is the danger of a virus that is 99.9915% survivable by kids in this age group, these kids that are in school? What's the fear? What's the fear? And don't say it's, you know, we don't want it spreading to the teachers. Everybody has had a chance to be vaccinated. Nobody's saying that you have to take the masks off. This is not, you know, we're not saying that people have to take them off. But why is it? What are y'all afraid of? What are you afraid of? Can anybody answer me that?
Um, I'm I, I'm not afraid of anything. We're, we're, we're referring to Rhode Island Department of Health guidelines, and we need to keep all our kids safe, our vulnerable kids, our vulnerable staff.
Vulnerable kids have had a chance to get immunized. Vulnerable kids can still wear a mask.
Vulnerable kids will be around other people without their masks and possibly.
If the masks, if the masks work, what, what different, if the vats, if the mask works and the vaccine works, what difference does it make if my child is unmasked? Anybody, it's open mic. Anybody can answer that. I mean.
Well, it's, it's not really open mic, but I am happy to send you the many reports I have on how masks work and how spread works. I feel like we've covered it a lot in the past few months.
No, no. No, no, you haven't. I mean, I, I'm still, I'm still curious as to what this, this number from the CDC that I just looked up tonight. This 99.9915% survivability rate. Why are you afraid of that?
Hannah, did you have your hand up?
Um, yeah, just to reiterate kind of what you said, Polly, that I personally am not afraid of anything having to do with this mask. It's more while we have plenty of healthy kids that would be in that 99%, we don't want to risk any kid who's immunocompromised or anything like that getting sick. It's more about protecting the community than protecting the individual self. And I think that's where I'm looking at it, is about all people in the building, not just one or another.
Thanks.
Next one?
Yep.
Kristin Moniz, if you can unmute yourself and, actually, hold on a second. It's giving me an error. This might work. You might have to join as a panelist in order to talk. It looks like you're on an older version of Zoom, maybe. But you should be able to unmute yourself now.
Hi.
There we go.
Sorry about that. I didn't know I needed to update. Thank you for letting me know. Um, I just want to start off by saying that 17 other school districts that I know of in the state of Rhode Island have already gone mask choice. Portsmouth, Lincoln, Exeter West Greenwich, Smithfield, Foster Gloucester, Gloucester, North Kingston, South Kingston, Pawtucket, East Providence, Narragansett, Charahoe, West Warwick, Warwick, Coventry, Cumberland, and Middletown. They are all going mask optional, and I don't understand how the tiny town of Little Compton is not using the numbers based on our town and our population to end the mask mandate in our school. I'm not sure you've been paying attention to what's been going around, around the state and around the country, but there's an overwhelming number of parents that no longer want to comply with mask mandates. We've done our part. The governor's emergency mask mandate is over on March 4th, as far as I know, and Little Compton should do the right thing and make it be mask choice. Whether our state leaders and school committees want to admit it or not, these masks are causing harm to the children. I can speak for my own children. I can speak for my friends' children and many other children that I am friends with through community groups that are against masking. Our children are suffering. They're tired of wearing masks for seven-plus hours a day because they also have to wear them at sports. They're tired of not being able to breathe, not being able to see their teachers' faces. My own children and many children I know are depressed, withdrawn, and anxious about the world we're living in. And it's long past the time for the parents to be able to decide whether or not their child should be masked. If adults can go out in public and congregate in the thousands, our students should be unmasked. We need to do what's best for our kids. And we need to stop threatening the vaccination rates of Little Compton as the means for how we're going to be deciding whether or not we need to take the masks off. If people wanted to be vaccinated, they would be vaccinated by now. There's no reason why the mask mandate should continue. Vaccinations are available. Masks can be worn. The school can help purchase N95 masks for those children and staff that need them. The school has excellent ventilation. They have air purifiers in each classroom, and the Wilbur McMahon School has one of the lowest class sizes in the state. So I'm wondering what you're going to do after March 4th, when people come to school and they don't have a mask on. According to our current policy, it is strongly recommended that all unvaccinated individuals wear a face covering when entering a district facility or attending school. Discriminating against students based on their vaccination status is wrong, especially because we all know that anybody can carry pass and spread COVID-19. Our children have done their part in helping keep the community safe, and it's time to let the Little Compton students be unmasked. We also need to address the visitor policy, the mask policy, and the student dress code policy, which all have masks in them. I also can speak for many parents around town that they are not willing to continue with this mask mandate and that they want to take action if you guys continue with it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next is Andrew Ryan. If you can state your name and address, can you unmute yourself, please?
Andrew Ryan, 40 Pageant Brook Road. I, I just want to thank you for having this meeting and considering this again and, and kind of thinking about this prior to your stated earlier review in March. So I think, I think now's a good time to start thinking about winding the mask policy down and how you do that and when you do that. Um, I was just curious if you've done any actual surveys of all of the parents that send their kids to school? I mean, you know, when you have these public meetings, I think the people who are the most frustrated often will show up. And I think that's true with any public meeting for any reason at all. That just tends to be how public meetings work. You'll have people who are involved or, or the, you know, the most vocal showing up, but it'd be, I think it would be very important for you to actually, because you have the ability with Parents Square, I think, to probably ask all of us parents what we actually think. And then you can actually look at that information and understand what the parents actually think. And, and then you could, then you can use that to help inform what the people in the town want, because I think that is very important at this point. Right? I think, I think the gentleman spoke earlier, you know, when this pandemic first started, we did type then, right? It was very kind of rare for young people to get the wild type, but no one had any idea of that. And so it made sense to mask. And then with the new variant, it looks like children are, are equally, are pretty close to equally likely to be infected and infectious with this new variant. I know from teaching on a college campus with 4,000 undergraduates with a 95.6% vaccination rate that we have one of the lowest case counts of COVID-19 in the country because we mask and test. I mean, we have 95.6% vaccination, but I can promise you 18 to 22-year-olds are not masking outside the classroom. Right? Um, and so vaccines definitely work to keep the cases down. Otherwise, we would be and we would have enormous case counts, and we're testing every week. So, and masks definitely make me in the classroom and lab, when I'm sitting with students for three hours at a time, feel much more comfortable that I'm not going to either bring something and cause them to test positive and have to quarantine and isolate or isolate for eight days, which I think a lot of people forget that, that if you have a flare-up in cases, there might not be a danger to the individual person at an individual level. But there is a huge disruption in family lives that come with quarantine and isolation. It's, it's a massive, I have been quarantined. I think my, myself and my research associate were quarantined in 2020 for 50 days because of contacts. And so you know, that, that's, that's an enormous disruption to people's lives. And so that my kids personally, they were, I mean, I, you know, we have a six-year-old boy and a six-year-old daughter, and so it's kind of a nice comparison. The, the boy doesn't wear his mask as well as the daughter does, right? The, right? But, but they, they don't complain. They don't complain about it because we don't make a big deal about it here. And I think, I think that's a big part of what's going on is, is parent, kids are a reflection of their parents' anxieties. But I think those anxieties are real, and I think we need to come up with some metrics on winding the, the policy down as we go forward.
Thank you.
Up next is Erin Davis. If you can unmute yourself and state your full name and address.
Hi there, Erin Davis, 108 Willow Avenue. Um, I'd like to offer a perspective from the front lines as a public ed teacher myself. You know, I, I do agree that in the height of the pandemic, obvious preventative measures did have to be in place to protect students and families and staff and families, things like cohorts, remote teaching, shields, distant parameters, to try, you know, to make this work while, I don't know if you want to call them whistleblowers, if you will, spoke against these parameters. And I was one that just say maybe as every nurse on the front line or teacher didn't really know the severity and obviously wanted the best for all and my own, you know, young family. Over time, things have definitely changed. Perspectives, common sense, and science and studies have definitely come out and, and changed, I think, what a lot of people think. Obviously, knowing now of the variants that aren't as severe. I'd like to talk about really the fidelity of mask-wearing. Or really, to my point, the lack thereof in the classroom, which no one, I don't think on the panel would really know this. I'm sure the principal, who's maybe in and out of classrooms, can see this. The superintendent, who's in and out of classrooms, can maybe see this. But really, you need to be hearing from teachers as to what's going on with these kids, day in and day out. So I'm here to speak on that. You know, I, many will make points to talk about the mask mandate and the community spread. I appreciated Ms. Mitchell's point as well as Ms. Kavanaugh's point as to, you know, what's happening in Little Compton. You know, we are a community. We shouldn't be focused on state numbers. We should be, you know, focused on community numbers. But for this morning alone, I ran my morning meeting as normal, and I teach in the inner city. I have a student body, a, a student classroom of 26 kids. And I knew I was going to speak tonight, so I did a little, I did, did this little thing where I, I kept the sticky notes on my lap, and I decided to make a mark every time I had to stop a student to ask them to wear their mask appropriately. So I ran my morning meeting from 8:50 to 9:20, and I counted how many times I would have had correct students not wearing the mask. I would have had to count from that half hour 32 times, stopping kids and interrupting them. My interruptions, you know, fix your mask, above your nose, under your chin. We have a saying, you know, many teachers do, above your nose, under your chin, above your nose, under your chin. I would have had to do that 32 times. When the world is screaming that masks are harming our students', socialization, academics, we're stopping them from the beauty of communication, and I don't think that you know this because you aren't in the classrooms. You don't see it. We're stopping them from the beauty of communication to tell them to fix their mask. And I honestly, I would, I would, I would love to invite you into my classroom to interrupt a student. I have 26.
That was.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Davis. That was the three minutes we weren't watching to give you a warning. I apologize.
Up next is Shannon.
Let's, let's, um, let's give everyone a chance to speak first, please.
Someone already in there? Is someone already? This is a different Shannon.
Oh, okay. All right.
It appears to be a different Shannon.
Okay.
Uh, okay. So person who is just Shannon, you can unmute yourself and state your full name and address, please. Are you there and able to unmute yourself? We can come back if not. I'm going to lower your hand for now. Just re-raise it if, if you're able to come back here. So up next, Sarah Pacico-Lovek. You should be able to unmute yourself. Full name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Sarah Pacico at One Pecker Road, Little Compton. Um, it was actually interesting listening to Erin Davis because I also work in a public school education. My population is the critically impaired, you know, medically impaired children. They have lung issues. They have heart issues. My kids have actually been unmasked. They all have medical doctor notes to be unmasked. And during even the peak of COVID, they were the only four classrooms that never closed down. Obviously, during Omicron, the kids are getting it. They are getting it. Fortunately, they're all doing well and have never been really sick, and most parents have reported that they've been asymptomatic despite their medical conditions. But agreeing with Ms. Davis, she made very good points that, you know, these kids, they are, they're losing the love of education. They're not even experiencing, some of them who've been in school from kindergarten to second grade, don't know anything besides masks. I do not raise anxiety issues with my kids. I don't talk about the mask. I have to wear them as well. It just is what it is. But I see it firsthand, what it is doing to kids, how much education is interrupted, how much they just don't understand things. They can't communicate. Those kids that don't have the articulation skills, they can't model from their therapist, even with plastic masks. We have teachers that are hearing impaired that are ready to quit because they can't communicate with their kids. And I understand that you have an obligation to keep people safe. But you need to consider everybody's safety, and there is a level of detriment to these kids that is occurring by wearing the masks. And as others have said, there are options to be vaccinated. There are treatments for the COVID today. You know, in, in regards to the gentleman who spoke at the college campus, you know, they are dealing with 4,000 kids that are together 24 hours a day. But now we have a five-day quarantine. It doesn't take that long. You know, the isolation is a quick five days, a close contact, or should be test and stay at most schools today in Rhode Island. You know, they don't have to go home if they're a close contact anymore. I don't recall what Little Compton's policy is on that, but most other places are close contacts, are test and stay, so they're not missing school. But I just, like everyone else, I just feel that, you know, when you're not in the classroom, you're not seeing this. And you do need to realize it is doing a level of damage to other kids. And you guys all sit there looking at us, going by CDC, going by Department of Health. It's like your decision is already made up. But there's so much that you're missing when this is involving this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next.
Polly, excuse me, do you mind if I just say something quickly?
That's fine. I can't see you, Hannah, because the timer is in front of you. So.
Okay, that's fine.
Your hands are like way up in the air.
Um, I just wanted to say that for, I can only speak for myself personally, but I do work in district. I do work with Little Compton School children. And. And that also informs my decision as well as things they say to me or how they're feeling and how they express themselves at school. So I just want people who keep saying that members of the board aren't in the school or don't know what's going on in the school. I can assure you, we do. I can assure you, we do walkthroughs. We go into classrooms. It might not be as often as teachers or as often as the principal or the superintendent, but they are also the experts. And then they also come and tell us what they observe. And that's how we inform our decision as well.
If I may, Chair. Can you hear me?
Yep.
In my office. Sarah, thank you for that. For your contribution tonight, we do at Wilma McMahon School, we do subscribe to the new protocol, screen and stay. And so our students who are close contacts, in most cases, if not all, they can remain on campus. And that has been highly effective. As you said, in keeping our kids, you know, learning and socializing and being where they belong in school. What I like about tonight's meeting is the fact that the Department of Health has given a recommendation to school districts to tie any masking to data. And so that is a new conversation in Little Compton. And I'm just so grateful that the chair and the vice chair and 58 attendees and seven, uh, five other panelists are on to discuss this. This is a new type of conversation where the gradual release of masking is being discussed based on data. And I think it's a great start. As the superintendent of schools, I, yeah, I, I do think that sometimes there's some masking fatigue among everybody in society at this point, not just in the K-12 space. But by and large, our kids are masking, you know, consistently and generally quite well. So I don't see that as quite an issue. As an educator, of course, I would love for the kids to be unmasked. I would love for all the teachers to be unmasked. But as a partner with this community and ensuring the optimal safety of all kids and staff. We definitely need to tie our mitigation measures, measures to data. And it is the time to do that. I can see us, you know, gradually releasing ourselves from the mask mandate. But I think it will be sort of gradual. And this is to me, the kickoff of, of that process. So I just like the way everyone is being so respectful and coming, you know, together in a spirit of community. This is a step, a big step in the past two years. And I see it as a real positive way forward. My 10 cents.
Thank you.
Back to the audience.
Yes, please.
Uh, up next is Denise Miller. If you can unmute yourself and state your name and address, please.
Hello, my name is Denise Miller. I don't live in your district. I live in Turriton, 47 Tanglewood Drive. But I'm here today to support the other parents in compelling you guys to go mass choice for all of your students. I'm hearing you guys talking about data and evidence and that you're following RIDO guidelines. I just want to just, just throw out some stuff out there. Since March of 2020 in Rhode Island, there has been zero children that have died of COVID. In Little Compton, since March of 2020, you've only had 509 cases total. That's the entire population of Little Compton. Since March of 2020, there's been less than five people hospitalized for COVID in Little Compton. That's all ages. And there have been zero deaths, all ages in Little Compton. So if you want to talk about community spread and you want to go off of the data, that's your data right there that shows it is safe to take off the mask for the kids. The American Conference of Governmental Industrial Hygienists, they are the experts in masks. They have said that a cloth mask, if two people are wearing them, do not work longer than 27 minutes. So that means they're only effective for 27 minutes. Our kids are in school for six hours and that doesn't count the kids that go to before care, after care, ride buses. Some of these kids are in masks for 10 hours a day. Those masks are not effective after 27 minutes. You're talking about the evidence from RIDO Department of Health. I'm sure you're all very familiar with Southwell versus McKee, which is the mass lawsuit that is currently ongoing in Rhode Island Superior Court. RIDO does not have any evidence that support long-term masking in children. They have never done a risk benefit analysis in the dangers of masking kids for long term. They don't have it. The court has compelled them to provide the evidence and they can't. Dr. McDonald testified under oath, he does not have anything to support the risk benefit to long-term masking for kids. So if you keep saying you're going off for RIDO and you have the data, then you might want to turn around and give it to the Supreme Court because RIDO doesn't have it. And they're not giving it to the Supreme Court or the Superior Court. Rhode Island kids are not okay. Despite what you guys are saying, they are not okay. You have to do the right thing and unmask the kids, give it back to the parents and make it parent choice. It is time. The data supports it.
Thank you.
Next is Stephanie Kavanaugh. If you can unmute yourself and state your name and address.
She already spoke too.
Did she?
Yeah.
Oh wait, actually, sorry. We are, I didn't realize.
Stephanie, we're trying to get everyone who hasn't spoken in first. So we're going to, sorry, jump ahead of you to some people who haven't had a chance yet.
My mistake.
Lori.
Lori Gaddis Barrett. You should be able to unmute yourself now and please state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Lori Gaddis Barrett and I'm also out of district. I'm from Gloucester. And the, the reason that I wanted to come speak to you tonight is I'm one of the parent organizers for, for the lawsuit that's been mentioned, Southwell versus McKee. And I was really interested with Dr. Lori Diaz Mitchell, I hope I pronounced that right. When she said RIDO issued guidance asking school committees to tie their decisions to the data. And, and I think you heard Ms. Miller speak earlier, right? I spent seven long days on a hard bench in Superior Court, watching Dr. McDonald testify that his two best pieces of evidence for masking children in school were two studies from the CDC. They're called MMWR reports. And one of them was based on a Facebook survey and the other one used mannequin. There's lots of evidence, if, if the committee would like, I'm happy to forward some of the video testimony that's on YouTube where we recorded the cross-examination. But the, the thing that I think the most important thing for you to know as a public body is that there, there wasn't irreparable harm finding. And by Judge Lanfeer in Rhode Island Superior Court, the state itself tried to appeal that decision to the Supreme Court. The Supreme Court refused to hear the appeal. What that means to you is that there's a legal precedent in Rhode Island Superior Court that says masking children causes irreparable harm to some of them. A vote by your committee to continue mask mandates is a vote to deliberately hurt children. And I'm listening to the parents in your community ask you to, to unmask them. And I want to let you know also in my role as a parent organizer, I've had parents from your district reach out to me and want to litigate the issue if the mask mandate does not fall in Little Compton. And currently, I just had our paralegal update the list. There's 13 parents on that list willing to pursue litigation. It's an important decision. It's a hard decision. Absolutely 100% support compassion for the people who are still afraid and the immunocompromised. We also heard testimony from the CDC that went, or we're not testimony in court, but we're hearing from FDA hearings. Rachel Walensky, head of the director of the CDC, testified in Congress that one-way masking works. So there, there is a path for, for those people who are afraid to, to upgrade their own mask and they can feel just as safe and confident as anyone else. I'm, I'm happy to answer questions about the data that we have or how to, how to access some of the court testimony that might help inform your decision if you'd like.
Not to interrupt, that's, that's right at about your three minutes, but we still need your address, please.
If you have questions about my testimony, you can direct them to 210 Elmdale Road.
Thank you. Um, I believe John Anderson, were, were you?
Sure. I just want to make sure that we're all clear about the record. The Rhode Island Superior Court rejected the claims brought that the previous speaker spoke about with regard to the appeal to the Supreme Court. This is what the Supreme Court's position is. They don't take cases in pieces. They take an entire case. And at this point, since the appeal was, the request for a preliminary injunction was rejected by the Superior Court. The Supreme Court was not going to take it up at this time. So, I mean, if people want to quote lawsuits and cases and so forth, they should do so accurately.
Thanks, Mr. Anderson. Let's see. Joyce.
Joyce Stevens, if you can unmute yourself and state your name and address, please.
Joyce Stevens, 28 C. Pottersville Road. I am new to Little Compton. I moved here last year and I myself am a clinical scientist. I've been one for over 40 years. I did send some information to the school committee, which I'm hoping they read. And I hope they actually went and viewed the statement put together by and signed by almost 1 million clinical scientists like myself, healthcare professionals and medical professionals about masking and about vaccines. What we're hearing from Rhode Island Health and as well as from Walensky at the CDC and the rest of them there is one view of how the scientific community looks at SARS-CoV-2. You are not getting all of the information. So I, I beg you all to go to the website, Great Barrington, pardon me, The Great Barrington Declaration. That will give you the insight from millions of scientists all over the world on how to treat this. And that was written in 2020. Since then, there have been vaccines that have been brought up. And I myself have been a clinical scientist and troubleshooter at Pfizer. And I am concerned about the vaccines. I am also concerned about our children and the masking that is causing so many irreparable issues with them. So please, when you get a chance, look at that. And I'm hoping that the principal, the superintendent and the school committee have looked at that website. Thank you.
Thank you. Allison.
Allison Camara, if you can unmute yourself and state your name and address, please.
Hi, Allison Leaming Camara. I'm at 398 Long Highway, Little Compton. And so I'll keep it short and sweet. It won't be three minutes. But there's just a few things I do want to say to you guys. We all, we all want to keep our children safe, but the COVID masking mandates, the vaccination mandates, they're dividing our small Little Compton community. You're hearing it here tonight. I'm sure you've heard it outside of these meetings. You're getting emails from parents that want their children unmasked. Our kids have the right to be able to go to school and see their teachers' faces, see their friends' faces. And we all have the right to make a choice. Let the parents make the choice. They're our children. We have a lot of kids that don't want to go to school with masks on, but yet these rules are being made by people who, the majority of the school committee doesn't even have children that are in the Little Compton school system right now. So we, we just want our children unmasked. They have the right to go to school unmasked. We have children that have social emotional issues that we're dealing with. Children have behavioral issues. It's hard to deal with these when you keep the masks on the children all day long. You can't see what they're doing behind the masks. You can't hear if they're mumbling something to you or to someone else, if they're trying to talk with their friends. Sometimes they can't even talk with their friends because they can't hear past the mask. It's frustrating to, to see this. So that's my two cents on this one. I feel like the past few months, when us parents get together to talk with you guys, I feel like it's falling on deaf ears. And I hope that you guys start listening to us parents because they're our children. Thank you.
Thanks, Allison.
There's the.
CW?
CW. Okay, CW, if you can unmute yourself and state your full name and address, please.
Hi, yes, my name is Sherry Wallach from 107 Long Meadow Road. I just want to bring up a perspective here possibly that wasn't really brought up. I see a bunch of parents here and I see the board and the committee kind of in a divide. I go to, you know, dozens of school committee meetings. I've sat in on all this. I want you to know that you can make a change right now, right here. You can get these parents who are pleading to you on your side for support and you can move forward as a community. If you continue to rule by dictatorship and not listen to the pleas of this, these parents, the disparity only grows larger. And that's not a place to, that you want to go. You're saying the end of March, you want to take off masks. Why? When do you not trust the governor's recommendation for it to be March 4th? There are all these other districts where the superintendents are taking a risk and listening to the parents and saying, you know what, we know it's a risk, but we're going to give it to you because we know you want what's best for your child. I know a lot of the districts in the state of Rhode Island, we're going to go mask choice in August. Then the governor put in the mandate. Okay. Would the, would the year have looked any different? I, you know, the Omicron spread throughout November, the Delta, December, the holiday season, it was massive. There was kid, there were kids quarantined out of classrooms in high numbers. Okay? If the masks really worked, we wouldn't have seen such a measurable spread in all of these districts around Rhode Island. So are we wearing masks just to keep us in a pandemic and to keep the fear alive? Are we really doing it for protection? You really have to ask yourselves this. Is it your job to protect these kids any longer when the governor drops the mandate and other districts are dropping them as well? You're really charged with the hard decision, but I am telling you, if you make the decision and don't listen to these parents, the divide only gets further and your district will suffer. Little Compton is a small community. I'm seeing it in Barrington. I'm seeing it in East Greenwich. I see it in Westerly. I see fights break out at these school committee meetings between the parents and the committees and this and that. You don't want that for your small community. You know, I know nobody wants to see anybody in harm or, you know, anybody die. I really do understand that. So my heart goes out to the decision you have to make. But it's important to keep that relationship you have with the parents in your community right now, or else you will.
20 seconds.
Okay. That's really all I have to say. I, I hope you guys do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
The Shannon with no last name.
I think that's the Shannon that spoke.
Well, there was one with a last name.
Okay.
Let me just double check. Maybe.
I don't think Christie got a chance to speak yet.
Or Amanda.
Couple of one.
Yeah.
Well, let's just double check that because they've had the hand back up.
Okay.
I guess, just Shannon, if you can confirm your name for us and address.
I actually already did speak. So if you'd like to come back to me after you get to Amanda, because I'm sure she has some excellent points that you'd like to hear, then that's fine with me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Then Amanda Morton. If you can unmute yourself and state your name and address.
Amanda Morton, 20 Pottersville Road.
Thank you.
So obviously I'm reaching out in the fact of the mask mandate. By sitting here, watching everybody, I have to say that you guys definitely make it. By sitting here watching everybody, I have to say that you guys definitely make it to, make it seem to us as parents that, you know, you guys really don't, you don't care any, about anything that we have to say about our input or anything. I've been watching these meetings since October and I really feel like it doesn't matter as parents, what we say. You guys are going to do whatever you want. And I'm asking, begging, considering the fact that this vaccine policy actually really messed everything up for me with my daughter in eighth grade the past few weeks with basketball and me not being able to watch her when we were told that that wasn't going to happen, that, you know, nobody was going to be left out. So I think, you know, it's come time where you guys really need to start listening to the parents. We know what's best for our kids. We know the harm that it's doing to our kids. Tuesday was the girls, eighth grade girls' last basketball game. The parents wanted to bring flowers for the girls. I asked if I could be there and I got told no. So my daughter looked at me and said, well, mom, that's nice. So what, everybody's parents is going to be there and give them a flower and you're not going to be there? So, you know, like you've got to realize that the harm that you're also doing for these kids. We're the only school that has the vaccine policy. We're the only school, we have the lowest numbers still in kids and we still have the lowest numbers of cases. Our vaccine rate went up a whole 2%, but the cases have still remained the same. I get you guys think you're doing what's right, but you have to think about the social, emotional damage that you're doing to the kids. I mean, if it's about money, so you guys can, you know, do, get your grants or whatever, we can fundraise. There's other ways to get the school money than to keep these stupid policies in that are harming our kids. And it's really upsetting as a parent that I couldn't attend my daughter's last year's basketball game. I couldn't go to any of them. I left the school in tears and my daughter has been terrible through COVID, extreme depression. She finally gets back into school to play a sport and can't even have support of her own family. It's not right. These, this stuff, it, it needs to end. These kids need to be brought back to somewhat abnormality. They go hang out with their friends after school on the weekends and they don't wear masks. But the minute they get in that building on Monday, they have to wear a mask. It makes no sense.
Can I ask a question, Polly?
Sure, Hannah.
I don't, this could be there for the superintendent or the principal, but just from sitting in on Portsmouth's meetings as well and from what they're, in their discussions, they also mentioned that regardless of their mask optional policy that goes into effect on the 7th, I believe, students are still required to wear masks on a bus until at least March 14th because that is a federal mandate, is that correct?
If I may, Chair? Yes, that, that is correct. The federal mandate does stand on the bus because it is narrow and shallow and it's a congregate setting that, you know, six feet space between the children is just impossible. So that federal mandate does remain in place.
And one more question. Our mask policy does not extend outside the building, correct? The, when they're at recess or they're at gym outside, they're not wearing masks?
They, they're several times during the course of the day. Certainly it's never enough. I agree with that, where the kids can be mask free and are mask free during snack, during lunch. They're all in the cafeteria during lunch. And outdoors during recess and our teachers do make a point, certainly not in the kind of, you know, strange weather events we've been having the past four weeks or so, but they do make a point of getting outdoors as much as possible, even for the core academic classes. So we're very lucky, we have a lot of green space and, and just a lot of outdoor space. You know, four square of basketball courts, everything at our disposal. So, so the kids are mask free more than they were a year ago, that's for sure. And it's, like I said, it's never enough and I'm glad we're having these conversations. I'm glad the Department of Health came out with that infographic today, the metrics. You know, looking at state data, looking at county data, looking at town data. I'm sure the school committee will land in, in a place where the decisions you make about masking are not just arbitrary like they were made for schools in the past. They just came down from on high, now it's a local decision. And, and I'm just very grateful that you are, you continue to be data-driven. And I'm hopeful that this is the beginning of, you know, some sort of sunset time for a mask mandate. It may not be now, but it will present itself and, and I have full confidence that all the parents and other stakeholders on this call will be in agreement. I think there are a lot of parents and a lot of staff members who do want to keep the mask mandate, I've heard from several. I'm reasonably certain that the vast majority of Willman McMahon School teachers, support staff and administrators, no matter what the mask policy will be, mask choice, et cetera, will continue to wear masks and 95s or KN95s. And I know I've heard from a lot of parents who, and, and students. Students have sent me letters as well, I believe some of the school committee members were also on these emails. So there's, there are a lot of people remaining silent. You know, when it comes to school committee meetings and, and on Zoom calls. But we are hearing from them as well. And also, the, the Hassanfeld Institute for Public Leadership at Bryant University administered a survey recently and it did say that 78% of parents support children wearing masks at school in the state of Rhode Island. Now, that survey has been held up as incredibly accurate with a very narrow margin of error. I get it, that data was gathered at the height of Omicron, so it may not be as robust as it is now. It may not be at the 78% mark, it would likely be lower, but that data is out there. It is, it was a scientific study, the way it was administered to the 400 households in the state. So there is a lot of data, some of it may seem like it conflicts or contravenes, you know, some other pieces. But like I said, I'm hopeful that we are on this call. Everyone has spoken so eloquently and respectfully and RIDO has given us that infographic as a point of departure, at least. For the first time ever, we have masks tied to the body that really has controlled our, thank goodness, and managed mitigation efforts in schools. And that's why I think we do have low numbers at Willman McMahon and we do have low numbers in the community. Our vaccination rates, nothing to brag about, but we have gone over the 50% mark for kiddos. Now that we have the documentation from the parents who had their children vaccinated in Massachusetts. So the state of Rhode Island does not record that. And so it's maybe towards 40% in terms of state recorded vaccinations of two of our kids and another 10%, maybe 11% came in from Massachusetts. So I think we're at about 51% and we're still waiting for a few more pieces of documentation. So we have moved the needle there. We did have quite a cluster in grade one, which, you know, really did bring us, you know, some data observational and anecdotal as well. And, you know, so whenever there's that gradual release, you know, I think we all need to be on board, including the silent parents and families and, and, and I think some staff members. I'm not sure, I honor all voices here and truly it is an area where we're all conflicted. And that's why we're meeting tonight and talking about this. No one is digging any heels and saying that's it, mask mandate or bust. So I don't want to say anymore, you know, the time is marching on here, we have more agenda items to discuss, but I for one am encouraged by the tone and culture of this meeting and also the local nature of the decision-making and I guess you can hear a few more and then do have some more really important items on the agenda that everyone, I think, will also be interested in around the vaccination mandate. We definitely want to get to that as well. So I will stop giving my 10 cents.
Thanks, Lori, and I would like to address that I've heard a couple of times tonight that our minds are made up, that we don't care, that we seem indifferent and I, I don't know, maybe, maybe that's how I'm presenting myself, but that's certainly not true. I certainly care. I grew up in this community, I raised my four kids in this community. I care most of all about kids. Adults, I can take them or leave them, but kids I really care about. I'm just joking. I saw Lori making a face, but no, kids I really care about and it is a super hard decision. There is no decision actually being, being made here tonight. This is a discussion where Hannah and I will come up with some recommendations to bring back to the full committee. RIDO gave us that information this afternoon, who knows what information will come out next week? We can always call another meeting. This is, this is a starting point to how, how we are going to get to not have to wear masks. My opinion is we're not there yet, but I do see the light at the end of the tunnel. I know masks are not great, I don't like wearing a mask, I know kids don't like wearing a mask. I know teachers don't like wearing masks, but it's, it's our job to make a decision to keep everyone in our building the safest. And we are, we are hearing behind the scenes from a lot of parents who do want to keep the masks, so that's important to know as well. All right, Jonathan, who's next?
I believe the only person who hasn't spoke with their hand up right now is Matt Nicole. If you can unmute yourself and state your name and address, please.
Hi, cool, thanks. Matt Nicole, 40B Old Main Road. I appreciate all of the attention people are paying to these things right now. I would, I would challenge you to hire a third party to do a survey of all the parents that, and then publish that data, have them anonymize it, publish the data. I just don't believe, you know, it's hard to believe that, you know, that there is some meaningful information in what's being said about some people think and some people think. So that's the one thing I would say, and then also just caution you that you're setting yourselves up to have to test for forever. So the masks are being used currently, it sounds like, as a punishment for the vax policy or the vax policy is being used as a punishment to keep the masks. None of this is based on any real meaningful information. The other challenge I would give you is to, to describe to yourself what the community spread rate has to do with anything in reality. It's a, yes, it is data, but data is not wisdom. It doesn't help you make decisions other than that, it is information you can use. So please, I would, I would really love, and I'll, I mean, let me know what it is, I'll even pay for the survey. Let's, let's do a survey of all the parents, let's find out what the information really is. And then I would really challenge you to try to figure out what the community spread number is and how it is tied to outcomes of any kind. Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe at this point, everybody who has their hand up has already spoken on this agenda item.
Okay. So, everyone has spoken, we're gonna, we'll go through the list again. Please know that we have more agenda items, all equally as important. And, but we do want to hear from everybody, so if we're welcoming new conversations, new thoughts on the topic. And again, it'll be three minutes. Christie spoken?
Yeah, she just put her hand up, so. Christie, you can unmute yourself and state your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Christie Salamito, I live at 18 Sakonet Trail. I just want to say it is absolutely unacceptable to allow this to continue after the state mandate is lifted on March 4th. As other people have said, the cloth masks do not work and the N95s only protect the person who's wearing them and only if they're worn 100% correctly. Maybe the older kids can do that, but I can guarantee you that the younger kids are not going to. I know this is going to be a separate thing, but I just want to address the vaccination policy. The vaccine is clearly not preventing the spread. So I don't think there should be different rules for vaccinated versus unvaccinated parents. I feel that the policy is cruel and it feels like a punishment for not complying. There's the difference between the two sides in this debate is that one is for forcing masks, masks and vaccines and the other is for choice. All we want is the parents to be able to choose what is best for their own children. The beauty of that is that if a parent still wants to mask their child, if a parent wants to give their child the vaccine, they can. You know, you guys keep, or you guys just happen to say that there's a lot of silent people who want the masks and I just want to know that if us who don't want the masks were quiet and this meeting went the other way, would you be standing up for us too? Thank you.
Thank you, I, I know we, we represent everybody. I, I truly believe that we all would be coming forward about that. Yeah, I guess just start from the top again.
Okay, Erin Davis, you can unmute yourself. And we'll still need your name and address again, I guess, just to make sure we're still talking to the same person.
Hi there, yep, Erin Davis, 108 Willow Ave. I just, I appreciate you letting me speak again, I just wanted to kind of close out the story that I was on, on before, full circle here, but I, I, you know, I was trying to make a point genuinely to invite you into my classroom and to interrupt, you know, the, the, the position that teachers are in now. Interrupting kids and what they have to say to us to remind them to wear their masks appropriately is so disheartening. It's so disheartening when you're working with a demographic that has a background of trauma and they need to speak. They need to tell you that they didn't have dinner last night, they need to tell you that they're having an issue with a friend. And instead, I have to stop them and remind them, you know, over the nose, under the chin. Fix your mask, fix your mask, I'd like to invite you into my small group. No one here has talked about academics and I know that it's not probably top priority, but it should, it should be up there. How are any kindergartners, preschool teachers? How are they teaching without pulling their mask down and, and really saying the TH sound without showing where their tongue is going in their mouth and having kids repeat that? How are my English language learners going to learn those sounds and how to make them without seeing my mouth? And to my point with this whole story is that the fidelity of wearing the mask has been lost when we take our mask down. Many kids get excited to talk to one another in, in morning meeting and in class. They take their mask down and they put it under their chin because they get excited to say something to one another because that's a natural thing to do. And, and with that, the fidelity goes out the window. So I'd like to just remind everybody that isn't in the classroom with these students and it's not, I'm not doing it anymore, I don't want to stop these babies from talking. They're there to learn and they're there to socialize and it's really a difficult situation to continue to remind kids or possibly have the first thing to say to a student who came in in the morning for a rough night, make it all the way down the hallway to my classroom to tell them, where's your mask? And how'd you forget it? You know, that's, that shouldn't be a position of ours to be in. And that's a really tough thing, instead of saying, good morning, welcome to my classroom and here's a hug. So I, you know, I just wanted to make that full circle kind of, you know, that point there and I appreciate you letting me speak again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next is Stephanie Kavanaugh, you should be able to unmute yourself again.
Hi, Stephanie Kavanaugh, 63, Old Stone Church Road, Little Compton. So I did just want to follow up, if we do keep this mask policy in place, will the school be purchasing and providing KN95 masks? You're referencing following what the CDC says, they're recommending those over cloth face masks. So if we do stick with this policy, we should be considering those. And also just to follow up with that RIDO survey, I, I also obviously don't know every person in Little Compton, but I've never Um I I also obviously don't know every person in Little Compton, but I've never seen the survey, never been asked to take it. I don't know anybody that has. I do know that the Secana Times is currently running a survey and 66% of respondents are in favor of removing masks with another 4% that are on the fence. So just to consider that, again, that local data.
Great, thank you.
Um Lori Barrett, if you can unmute yourself and state your name and address again, please.
Laura Gattis Barrett, Two Town, Elmdale, Gloucester. Uh I just wanted to quickly respond to John Anderson's comment that I inaccurately quoted my own lawsuit. I know exactly what it says. I have all the paperwork. I was the one sitting on the hard bench and Mr. Anderson, I didn't see you there one day, not even for one minute. So I'm happy to send any of the paperwork and and speak truthfully about it. The parents did lose the injunction. The lawsuit continues. The Rhode Island Department of Health has thus far been unwilling or unable to complete the discovery process. The next due date is March 14th. They're asking you to tie your local decision to data that they won't provide, that they have not provided. And in addition to that, they've been hauled before the Senate Oversight Committee, and I spoke directly with Chairman Lou DePalma, who asked them for data, and they won't give it to him either. So I I I'll, I'll leave it there.
Thank you.
Uh Madam Chairman, again, I'd like to respond to Ms. Barrett. Again, she misrepresents what has happened in the Superior Court. The fact of the matter is, and anybody can check it by reading Providence Journal or Googling uh mask and the name of the judge, Judge Lampier, that the Superior Court rejected Ms. Uh the arguments advanced um by uh Ms. Barrett Gaddis.
Thank you.
Allison Camara.
Yep.
Could be able to unmute yourself and state your name and address, please.
Yes, Allison Leeming Camara, and I just want to say one more thing. If we do have silent parents reaching out to you then, and they want to keep masks on their children, maybe they can just keep the masks on their children. So the rest of our kids can get on with this and get back to learning the way that they should be learning, unmasked. Thank you.
Okay, um Andrew Ryan, you should be able to unmute yourself now.
Oh, thank you very much. Andy Ryan, 40, Paget Brook Road. I just wanted to agree with Mr. Nicole for the first time ever, I think, that that I've been in these meetings, that you should do a survey. Uh uh and I think I suggest this as well. Um and you know, I don't know if you need to hire someone, or you probably can conduct some type of service so you know if you're, you know, on my, if my phone responds to, you know, you can actually look at who's responding, but but you should actually get some accurate information about what parents actually think. Public meetings are very hard to do that. It always is. I grew up in the South. I know exactly how public meetings work to try to get uh school boards or something to do something, whether it's uh, you know, a majority or minority or not. But I think you you need to do that. And and also, I I also have to agree that the cloth masks are fairly useless in many cases. Little kids don't wear them very well. I bought my kids uh KN95s quite some time ago uh because they fit much better, and I wouldn't let anyone in my lab without an N95 mask uh who work too close together. So, you know, I think, you know, if I was myself, I wear an N95 all day long for sometimes 10 hours. Uh it doesn't, you know, um my kids don't seem to really mind wearing the mask, but I don't think they wear them all that well, to be honest with you. So I, I think we need to get get a handle on what parents, the the actual entire population of parents. Um because I think it does matter what parents think in in this case. Uh and then I would suggest that you maybe have a meeting and schedule a meeting, because I think most, a lot of parents I hear, I don't know if they've remember, but the Policy Committee meeting, you're, you're, I believe your job is to look at policies and then recommend that to the school board. And I think the superintendent has some powers in this, in these claws. But you can, you've been really good about having meetings more often than I think, you know. So I would suggest maybe you go ahead and schedule another meeting for the first of March, maybe, just to, just to give people an, you know, a sense that this is going to continue to be looked at in an honest way and you're in, right? Um I know these are long meetings, and there's a lot of people that are very frustrated and upset and and want to speak. But I think if you could come back to us with some data about what actual parents think, um and then also we can look at what's happening uh in the, in the communities, you know, um and and get a better gauge at it. Hopefully cases keep going down and we can get past this. I'm personally sick of teaching with a mask, so.
Thank you. Um we do, we still are on the mask policy. We need to move to the vaccination policy. I see two more hands up. Um I'm gonna stop the conversation about masks that, with those two people. Um and if those two people still want to speak about masks, you can, but know that we're gonna go talk about vaccines next. Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
So first one is Kristin Monas. Uh we'll bring you in here again with the.
Hi. Monas, 208 Long Highway, Little Compton. Um thank you for allowing people to speak again on this topic, and thank you for everything and being calm and patient with us um and listening to what a lot of us have to say. I want to piggyback on what Erin Davis had to say and thank her for her true depiction of what teaching in the classroom is like. I taught at Wilbur McMahon School. I remember um telling kids hundreds of times per hour to fix their masks. So thank you for bringing that up, Erin. Um my biggest question to the committee is, when are the parents going to be notified about what's happening with this mask policy? Most parents who are involved probably think that this mask policy is going to be lifted on March 4th, and they don't understand that the school committee has the rights to decide to continue it. Um I also would like to know what I'm supposed to tell my children, my own children, as to why Middletown's going mass choice, Portsmouth's going mass choice, Tiverton's probably going mass choice, Westport's going mass choice. Their cousins in West Warwick are going mass choice. What am I supposed to tell them about why Little Compton is choosing to keep the masks on? And everyone else is choosing to go mass choice. I disagree with what you said about the teachers. I do think many of them will keep masks on, but I think some are too afraid to speak up and would never tell you their true opinions about the vaccination mandate or the mask mandate. I disagree with what you say or what other people say about kids not minding about masks. Kids do mind, and it is taking a toll on their social, emotional well-being, my children included. Um so I appreciate it. I appreciate Andrew's comments. I appreciate Matt's comments. And I 100% think you need to do an accurate survey of what the community thinks because it cannot be made by two or three people in a closed room. Thank you.
Um as for notifying parents, so we haven't made a decision yet. This hasn't gone to the committee for a vote. We would never prematurely um announce anything. So if something changes or a decision is made, that's when parents would be notified.
Uh and Christine Olivera, you should be able to unmute yourself now, and please state your name and address again.
Yes, Christine Olivera, 49 Long Highway. Um you know, it's been brought up several times during this meeting that um, you know, the committee um parents keep saying it doesn't seem like you're listening, you're not listening. That's um mainly because we've been saying the same things. The majority of people on here are asking to make masking choice. You've seen the numbers rise and rise and rise over this one topic. You're seeing division, discrimination. I I just, there are parents who just came on here saying their kids don't wear their mask half the time. The kids don't even wear their mask half the time. We know this. You're not coming with the data or the reason of why you are keeping the children masked. There are people, a lot in this town, their children are homeschooled because of this. They want their kids to come back. There are a lot of parents that are ready to unenroll if you guys do not do what needs to be done, like the majority of the local schools by March. I hope you're really listening. And again, we're saying it that we see you don't because we're bringing forth, we're taking our time, effort, energy, showing up and telling you our feedback from our children, our children. If someone wants to keep their children masked, by all means. But for those who are done and their children are done and going through so many different emotional things that us as parents are dealing with daily, they need to have the choice. Like, please make the right decision here because I can see this getting ugly. And nobody wants that in this small community. We don't want that. We want our kids to have fun. We want our teachers and I've heard from my children, the teachers are miserable. They hate it. They hate having to keep telling the kids how to put their mask. They hate wearing masks. They hate having to holler. They can't breathe. Like, stop and think for a minute. Forget this, the CDC and all of this stuff. Listen to what we are telling you. Let us make the choice, please, for our own children. Thank you.
Thank you. Hannah, do you have any more to say about um the mask mandate?
Just like, I don't know if this is a comment or a question, but um we, alright, so this is a question. We got the Rito guidelines today, that, right, that stemmed from the governor, and the governor made his decision. That was a few days ago already. So schools, that was last week even, right?
Yes.
And so schools have made a decision about masking prior to getting this release from Rito today.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and this information came out this afternoon, mid-afternoon maybe, so um I I'm not opposed to um having another meeting within the next couple of weeks.
I'm not opposed to that either. I, sorry, I didn't want to cut you off.
That's okay.
I think, I mean, I, I can sympathize with a lot of the parents and the students that have come on and said that they're sick of masks. I'm sick of masks. Um I just don't want to pull masks. And then there'd be an explosion of cases, and then we're back here at a meeting, and it's, why did the school committee pull masks and get all of our kids sick? Um I think that the most prudent thing to do would be to let these other schools go mask optional. See what happens and revisit it with the hope of ending masking in April. That's what that's just the only way I feel like I can make it make sense and make everybody happy is just giving it a little more time, like giving it, we want some data. Let's see from these other schools what case numbers are going to look like when you have mask optional. Um that's my point of view.
Alright, thank you. Um okay, so we're gonna move on to um 2.2 COVID-19 vaccination requirement policy. Alright, one open. Okay, um. So I've been, um I've spoken to um administration, spoken to um uh community members, um and I don't, I feel like we may be at a place where we could pull back the hours of the vaccination policy. Um this is my own opinion. To maybe 3:30, so we, while the kids are in school, um having their educational time, it's vaccinations required. But for events that are after school, um we would not require vaccinations. Um what are your thoughts on that, Hannah?
Um I agree with that. I think in terms of um I I agree. I think during the day, um people in the building, while we do have students learning, should be vaccinated. And then after school, sports, events, things like that, um I agree.
Um I I am concerned about maybe um uh our more vulnerable staff and teachers. Um I don't want to put them in a position where um they may may feel unsafe. I don't know if there is some wording around that or that we can um assure them that um they don't have to participate in anything that they don't feel, that they do feel uncomfortable in.
May I speak, Chair?
Sure.
I'm willing to come up with that language that would protect a teacher who um and and anonymize all of this as well, a teacher who may not feel comfortable in an after-school activity with um unvaccinated visitors or whatever. I'm willing to come up with that language that would protect the teacher and also allow access for any and all visitors, volunteers, vendors after 3:30. I will, you know, we'll find a way to um, I can work with uh Little Compton Teachers Association Executive Board and craft that language, and I think we can make it work for everybody.
Okay, terrific. So it does look like there's another meeting in our midst. Does anyone have any comments around that?
A couple of people in the audience.
Okay.
Uh we will start at the top again. Um so Amanda Morton, if you can unmute yourself and state your name and address, please.
Amanda Morton, 20 Potterville Road.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So I just wanted to comment on um on Polly's comment that she made earlier in regards to you know, the whole, we don't think that you guys listen thing. So I just wanted to bring up the fact that I have the meeting minutes from the October 13th school committee meeting. And it was said that once the policy was adopted, we can always go back and change it and tweak it. It's never set in stone. And if it does get voted in and come up with a better, uh better information, different information, some, something we overlooked, we can always go back and amend the policy. And then there was another comment that was made on December 8th by Polly that said, for any event concern, I am not opposed to a special meeting. If it is something urgent, we can make it happen. So that didn't happen, okay? Like, it didn't happen when I reached out for my daughter. I got told no. I even offered to test prior to going in. So I kind of feel like that's why we feel the way we do, because certain things are said at meetings. We are listening, but then when we're voicing our opinions or something comes up, it doesn't happen. Multiple parents have requested meetings to have certain items put on the agenda, and they're denied, they're overlooked. And then when it gets brought up at a meeting, it was, oh, I never got those. So it's kind of like, yeah, that's why we don't believe anything. And I made a survey myself and sent it out last week for the unmask the kids to see how many people would be for unmasking the kids in the school or making it pro-mask. Uh pro-choice, sorry. And I got over 127 people to sign it. I'll be more than happy to forward that to you if you want, but I definitely think that if it's something to where, you know, people feel the way they do, then we need to just make it a choice. Because at this point, none of us parents feel like we're being heard, and nobody feel, and a lot of us don't feel like it even matters what we say. Like, right now, I'm saying what I'm saying, but I really feel like I'm wasting my breath. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Um we actually, um we have had a couple um agenda requests. The, we are discussing the items that were requested now. Um that, you know, well, I'm sorry, you um I'm sorry about how my words are interpret, interpreted. Um I really, when saying we can always have a special meeting about a policy, we can. Um I'm thinking more of a, a more community issue. Um I, maybe I should be more deliberate with my words. I'm sorry, that's Um, I, maybe I should be more deliberate with my words. I'm sorry that's how you interpreted them. Um, Allison?
Can I make a comment quickly, Polly?
Sure.
I just, um, just because I feel like it keeps coming up. Um, and I just want to make sure everybody's clear with the role the school committee plays in these types of decisions. And in this specific subcommittee, like Polly's mentioned, there, where there's no vote tonight, this is, we made this a subcommittee meeting. I think mainly because we knew it was going to be a very long conversation and having those conversations during a regular monthly meeting. When there's twenty-five very other important things to discuss, um, just didn't seem. Like a effective use of our, the public's time, of the committee's time. Um, I think this type of forum is a lot easier where we can have these types of conversations when it's smaller. And then to that point, the school committee is in charge of setting policy, which is what obviously we're doing. And then it's up to the administration to do the day-to-day. Um, and while, like, so we can't, we are not here to. Make every single point as to how the policy folds out exactly throughout the day. That's why we have our administrators here to advise us on good policies and how they should be written and how it will be. Um, how they will be able to implement them, um. And I just, I think. Maybe we should, I just, I think we need to reframe that is, we're, the school committee doesn't come in every day and make every single rule here. We're just setting the outline and there's, it's more a funnel. We're up here. We're the big part of the funnel.
Go back to public.
Yep.
Uh, Allison Camara, if you can unmute yourself and state your name and address, please.
Hi, Allison Lehman Camara, three ninety-eight Long Highway. Um, so right now, we're discussing the vaccine mandate in regards to all employees, volunteers, and third-party contractors. Being vaccinated. Is that correct?
All non-union employees.
Right, right, non-union employees. So, um. So I just want to say that I, I don't agree with pushing the vaccine mandate. Onto people. I think that if people want to be vaccinated, it should be their own free choice to do it or not. And I don't think, and I've said this, I think, back in October and November, I don't think anyone should be fired from their job. Or terminated from their job for deciding not to be vaccinated. Um, a lot of people have worked through the pandemic, are dedicated to what they do, love what they do. And um, and I just don't think that anybody, union or non-union, by the way. Should be fired from their position. Um, and that's that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, up next is Kristin Monas. Uh, I gotta bring you back in this other way, hold on. Should be able to unmute yourself.
Hi, Elsa, I think. Um, Kristin Monas, two oh eight Long Highway, Little Compton, Rhode Island. Um, I appreciate you considering changing, uh, making amendments to the vaccination policy for visitors. I did mention at the last meeting that I used to work at Little Compton Schools and chose to quit my job in Little Compton due to your vaccination mandates. I am devastated about that. I probably cry about it at least once a week. I'm not, probably three times a week. I wish I still worked there, but I don't. So I wanted to make a couple of comments. Um, one, that I'm proud and happy that you're leaning toward the right direction. Because my children are some of the most wonderful kids that love to participate in all the activities at Wilbur McMahon School. And the fact that they were nervous about participating in anything in that school makes me sick to my stomach. They did not join the play, and they're always asking me about when they can have a concert or when they can do this and when they could do that. And I would really like to see the amazing, wonderful events that used to happen at Wilbur McMahon School. Maybe they might be different, maybe they might be smaller, maybe they might be changed, maybe things can't be the same as what's, what they once were. But Little Compton, you'd be charming and wonderful and amazing. And now that the vaccination policy might be changed, someone like me could come and maybe volunteer or donate. And be a part of the community again. And I would really appreciate that you highly consider that. Because there are lots of people that you might not know about behind closed doors that are very upset and angry about this vaccination policy. And they actually love Wilbur McMahon School, and they have many good things to say about it. And they want it to go back to the way it used to be. So I appreciate you considering this, and I appreciate you taking the time to have this meeting. I also hope that you consider having this special meeting um in regards to the masks, in regards to the vaccination policy sooner than later. Because the longer you wait, the more difficult it is for families who are waiting, and more difficult it is for the children who have been waiting and expecting. Some type of concrete answers from our committee. Because it's out there and other communities are doing things that you're not. And I also just wanna put it out there that I hope Little Compton is not pursuing any more strict measures with their teachers. I watched the Barrington, some of the Barrington School Committee meeting last night, and five teachers were fired for not being vaccinated, and I think it's disgusting. So I hope Little Compton is doing right by the teachers and keeping every last valuable educator in that building, in that school. Because they are all wonderful people and they work very hard. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, up to the thing, uh, Stephanie Dion, if you can unmute yourself and state your name and address, please.
Uh, hi, yeah, this is Justin Dion, twenty-four Amy Heartpath. Uh, at the end of the mask conversation, Hannah had mentioned looking at some of these other. Uh, schools that are going mask optional. I, I know we're off this topic, but she brought it up at the end of the conversation. I just had a quick question. Um, she had mentioned looking at some of these other schools and seeing, you know, quote-unquote, what happens with them. And if cases rise in those schools. Um, given the statistical invulnerability that these kids in this age bracket face. What exactly does a rise in cases, if that is what in fact happens with some of these other schools? What does that have to do with the kids in our schools' safety? If you could answer that question just real quick. I know we're off of that subject, but, real quick.
Uh, can I just ask for you to clarify? You were asking if there's a high, if case numbers go up in schools that go mass optional. What does that have to do with Little Compton?
Well, given, given the statistical invulnerability of kids in this age bracket. Even if cases go up, what, what does that really matter if cases go up in schools? If kids are not getting sick, if most of them are asymptomatic, i- if virtually none of them are hospitalized. I mean, this is kind of akin to the flu. Are we just gonna keep them masked even, you know, because of the chances of them getting the flu?
Um, well, so my thinking behind that, and I'm happy to clarify that quickly. I know we're on a different um subject. But my thought on that is just that, um. It has been shown that mask-wearing, high rates of mask-wearing in communities. It means lower rates of infection, and that may be changing now depending on variants. And however, and the science between those variants, but my thought was that if. Other schools go mask optional and all of a sudden there's a boom in cases, then that is showing that masks work. And that we need to be wearing masks. I'm hoping that in masks, like you're saying, either kids are asymptomatic. Or they're not sick at all. It's not infectious. That's what I truly hope for. Um, I. Don't want anybody thinking that I am sitting here forcing masks on anybody or want masks on anybody, but um, that was just my thought. Because it seems like everybody's asking about data and other, we're talking about other communities. But then you want us to focus on Little Compton data, but then you bring in other communities' data. So I just am trying to figure out a good idea for how we can all, um. What data we should use, what we're looking at. Um, and that was just my thought. That might not be a good thought, but.
I lost my list. There we are. Uh, Hope Burchard, if you can unmute yourself and state your name and address, please.
Um, hello, Hope Burchard, one oh five Amesbury Lane.
Thank you.
I have, I have a question about um the vaccination policy and you're, I'm, thank you for entertaining. You know, stopping in at three thirty. Uh, what happens to a parent who would like to meet with some teachers? Will those teachers be required to meet with them after those hours? If you have an issue with your student, your child, and you want to discuss it. How is that gonna be addressed?
So, um, that would sort of go back to, I would need Lori. I'm not sure if she's here right now. Um, it would, it would be sort of the same topic around, um. That we discussed earlier, um, that we wanna make sure that teachers feel comfortable. Um, we want some words, some wording that works with the union, that um teachers. Can meet with, with um parents after school, but we want them to feel comfortable. Um. It even, it regardless of the parent's vaccination status. We don't wanna put teachers in um positions that they don't feel comfortable in. Um, but maybe you're referring to in-school meetings or after-school? Just so I can clarify.
I would just like access to my kids' teachers. We have had an incredibly difficult year. And I feel a huge part of it is because I have not been able to build the relationships with the teachers. Cause I cannot meet with them face-to-face.
Lori, can um, can you um, can you give me some ideas of how this may work?
Um, sure.
Yeah.
Sure, and, and thank you, uh, uh, Policy Subcommittee for, um. You know, tweeting, being willing to tweak this so that it covers just the instructional day. Um, I know we've had discussions. Um, the school committee does write policy, and administration must adhere and apply and actuate. But I have to say, the school committee, these past weeks, um, once the surge has sort of imploded. And dissipated, I think we have just six cases in Little Compton this week as opposed to twenty-one the week before, twenty-four before that. And then forty, you know, a height of forty-four cases, quite high for, um, if you, if you do the math, that's a very high positivity rate. But we're good now, and thank you for dialing um the, the after-school component back a bit. Now that it's safer to do so. So there are a couple of options, Hope. Um, obviously, there's Zoom, there's um, you know, G-meet. But you wanna meet with the teachers face-to-face, and teachers do, just about all of our teachers dedicate at least one day a week. For um after-school work, and so we can make that happen after school. Um, for all of your, your child's teachers. Um, our teachers don't need a contract to do extra work, but it is um a contractual piece. Uh, the after-school piece. Um, I believe it's maybe fifty-five zero minutes. And so we can make that happen, absolutely. Once the school committee meets and ha, well, there has to be, uh, you know, once the policy is changed. And um the school committee does a vote on that version. Do we have to do another, do we have to do two reads of this, Attorney Anderson? To a revision?
Yes.
So we're gonna have to do two, two quick meetings to actuate some of these changes. Um, and that's why we're here tonight. That's why the school committee and administration, I think Principal McKinnon is on as well. Our IT Director, many of our teachers. That's why we're here. We're here now that the data. Um, I know I'm sick of hearing it, sick of saying it, but now that times have changed a bit and views have changed. And um, you know, this is a positive meeting, and, and I don't want anyone to feel frustrated at all. Uh, I wanna thank, uh, the, the, like I said, the Policy Subcommittee for being willing to do this tonight. And um, you know, for, you know, at the optimal time revising. Um, some of the mitigation uh language that we have in place. So hopefully we'll make that happen. And I assure you.
Okay, um, back to public comment. Uh, Jen Rocha, you are next. If you can unmute yourself and state your name and address, please.
Hi, Jen Rocha, one oh five Willow Ave. I'm just curious if the committee, instead of thinking black and white, could think outside the box for a minute. We know that the vaccine doesn't prevent the disease. It just lessens the effects. So what about the possibility of people who are unvaccinated, who are non-union, just having, simply having a test before they enter the school? It's in real time, not talking about forty-eight hours. Everyone has access to the free federal binax now tests. And just having people test before they enter the school, that would allow parents to have interactions with their teachers, see their kids' classrooms. Be excited about Wilbur School again. People have said over and over how this is causing such a, a big division. So maybe instead of thinking black and white, we think outside of the box a little. Even the, the test would be in real time, so we would know right then. And at this committee, I meant, might not have been this committee, but at one of the meetings, you know, you guys were pushing the rapid test. So I know we are on board with it. That's all.
Thanks, Jen. Um.
Um, next up is Denise Miller, if you can unmute yourself and state your name and address.
Hello again, Denise Miller. Uh, like I said before, I'm out of District, uh, forty-seven Tanglewood Drive. Um, I just wanted to, just a comment on the vaccine requirement that you guys are having, uh, talking about. You're talking about, you don't wanna unmask the kids, and then you, you, you know, you're saying your vaccination rates are low. You worry if it's gonna, if you unmask too soon, that it's gonna cause a big outbreak. Well, if you're talking about data. Barrington is the highest vaccinated town in the state, and currently, they have the highest spread. Their kids are still wearing masks at recess. Providence is a big district. They have the lowest vaccination rate, and their positivity rate is lower than Barrington. So by using that um logic, I mean, it's complete, it's completely moot. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Um, next is Nicole Freitas, if you can unmute yourself and state your name and address, please. It's okay, we will come back to you then. This, Sarah Pacheco Lebec. Uh, oh, hand just went down. Okay, there, it's back up. Okay, there we go.
You should be able to unmute yourself.
Yeah, sorry. I just had a question when you're discussing the policy on, um, this going to three thirty. And Lori and Jack, would you also um consider changing that policy for in-person IEP meetings if they're requested by a parent? That isn't vaccinated.
Do you mean Sarah during the school day?
Yes, because IEP meetings can only be held during the school day. So I just, just if you're gonna reconsider, I figured maybe do it all at once. Um, you know, if a parent requests an in-person. And I know in other districts, and not that we're the same, but um, you know, that they, it's parent. If a parent chooses for an in-person versus a virtual IEP meeting, they typically are granted and vaccination status isn't a requirement. So if you're gonna revisit the policy, I was just throwing that out there as a thought.
The Chair, um, can also, you know, chime in on this, but. Definitely the testing option is something I'm in favor of. You know, during the school day in lieu of vaccination, and, and I believe the Subcommittee, I'm not quite sure. I believe they would concur. Um, and, and that's another reason why we're. And, and that's another reason why we're discussing all of this tonight. So, you know, that, that is another tweak to the policy that is a prospective tweak. The Chair has asked if, I think we have the human resource capacity to test for those types of visits, and I said, yes, I do believe we do.
Thank you.
So the answer is yes, Sarah. So yes, I.
I would just simply point out, most other districts in the state, in fact, the vast majority, I attend IEP meetings probably in 10 different school districts. I've only had one IEP meeting where it has been in-person since the beginning of the school this year. The, frankly, school districts prefer IEP meetings to be virtual, parents overwhelmingly prefer that IEP meetings be virtual.
Thanks, John. Yes, I, I was asking Lori if we had the personnel and the tests, and if that was how logistically it would work to test during the school day. So that's something that we'll have a conversation about and consider as well. Hannah, is that your hand up?
Yeah, I just wanted to put in my two cents about the testing. I think it was my idea when we first started talking about vaccine mandate to offer rapid testing events before any type of event, and at that point, it wasn't a possibility for us in terms of testing and human resources, and I think that's why we moved away from that. But I'm still in favor of testing if you're unvaccinated, and I'm specifically in favor of that for volunteers, visitors, and third-party contractors. Where it messes me up is, we have a part of the contract with our union employees that they have had to be vaccinated. As we've heard, we've lost a teacher from that, and I don't think it's fair to teachers who still are at the school that if a sub were to come in, that the sub isn't required to be vaccinated. I still think anybody who's in front of a student for the whole school day should be vaccinated, but we should allow unvaccinated, vaccinated parents who request in-person meetings during the school day to test in lieu of vaccination.
Thanks, Hannah.
Let's see. There is one person left who didn't go yet, I think, oh, two actually. Nikki, just Nikki, if you can unmute yourself and state your name and address, please. Are you there, Nikki? You should be able to unmute, probably the button in the bottom-left corner, if you're on a computer. We'll come back to that one.
Nicole Freitas.
Nicole Freitas. You might have been having some trouble before, you should be able to unmute yourself, Nicole, if you're there. Yeah. We, I don't know if I did this before, I will lower your hand for now, but if you can and want to talk, please feel free to raise it again. I believe, oh, back up, okay, we'll try one more time, you should be able to unmute if you hit the mute button. Doesn't look like it's unmuting though for you, I can ask. Still nothing on this.
So since they're having trouble, can they call in, is there a call-in number or is that?
Yeah, so on the, on the agenda and on Board Docs, there is, there is a call-in phone number for the meeting, or if you have specific questions, I believe we direct goes to your email, right? You can email maria dufer at m d u f u r at l c s d dot k 12 dot r i dot u s, I'll put that in chat in a second. But for anybody else still having trouble, I guess we'll keep moving down the list and hope we hear from you. Matt Nicole, you are next, if you can unmute yourself and state your name and address.
Hi, this is actually Nicole Freitas, I'm Matt Nicole's wife. I don't know why my phone wasn't working, sorry about that. Nicole Freitas, 40B Old Main Road. I, I was just curious, since we're focused on being so data-driven with these policies, I was wondering if you could provide for all of us exactly what data and metrics you will use that would trigger a reversal of the vaccination policy, so exact numbers, thank you.
A reversal, you mean going back to? I don't understand the question.
So we haven't, we haven't discussed a metric for a removal of the vaccination policy. We were, we had metrics for masks and and some data shared with us from Rhode Island Department of Health. We have not discussed or considered yet a removal of the vaccination policy.
Lot of windows. Andrew Ryan, leave you, oh, nope, his hand just went away. Okay. In that case, Kristy, just Kristy. You can try to unmute yourself and state your name and address, please.
My name is Kristy Salamito, and my address is 18 Secana Trail. I just have a quick question regarding this policy, so I am new to school. My son is currently homeschooled now, but if the mask mandate gets pulled, we would definitely consider sending him to school, it's what we really want to do. Am I never going to be allowed to see his classroom or his teacher because of the vaccination policy? How's that going to work for like the new kindergarten parents coming in? So every new kindergarten parent coming in, if they're not vaccinated, they don't get to go into like an open house or anything?
That's a good question, Kristy. Why these meetings are important to come up with other barriers or ideas that we need to consider. I, I, off the top of my head, I don't know that, how that will work, but I have put that on my list over here of things that we need to work out, and how, how it could play out, and how it would be. How, how we would give those parents access, or what we would be able to do.
Um. Grandma List here. Maureen, I don't believe you have spoken, it is just Maureen, if you can unmute yourself and state your name and address.
Hi, this is Maureen Aziz, 530 Long Highway. I just, a couple of quick, I guess, one question is natural immunity, if somebody had proof of natural immunity, would that be considered? I know there's a lot of studies coming out, and I was reading one recently saying, you know, still like a natural immunity is considered like your first, I'm trying to think of the words, but like your first, like dose, and then one other, like a lot of scientists and research have saying that if you get one more vaccine, like be considered a booster, so I wasn't sure if you guys would consider natural immunity within your policy as an option, I know they were doing that in Europe for a while, I know that they've now dropped most of their restrictions, if not all of their restrictions over there. Um, and I also wanted to say, like, I know this has just been a really, you know, trialing time for everybody in America, and it's been hard on everybody on all sides. We all have our risks versus benefits. And I hope we can, no matter, you know, no matter what side you are on, that we can all kind of just still be a community, we're a small town. I'm somebody that is definitely was comfortable with masks. My son was born extremely premature, so we spent a lot of time in the NICU, and I've seen life support, I've seen other families and their tragedies that they've had to deal with. And, you know, we did everything we could to, you know, mitigate, you know, mitigate our risks and stuff, and staying home, you know, keeping our circle tight, and we got it, you know, we got COVID. Thankfully, we all did well, my son, who, you know, takes a daily steroid inhaler, he's had a lot of different issues medically, handled it really well, better actually than myself and my husband. But I just, I don't know, I just wanted to kind of say, like, let's, you know, we're all trying to do what we feel is best. And I just hope that we can all, at the end of all this, we can all just kind of come together as a community regardless. But yeah, if we can find ways that would be, you know, compromiseable to everybody and what they feel is their risk, you know, whether that be masks being your safety, or masks being, you're not, you don't want to, but anyways, I will get off, but I think it's, I don't know, anyway, I just hope we can all come together, and I don't, I don't know, but anyways, back to the original comment, because I'm not a good public speaker.
You're at about 10 seconds.
Okay, just if natural immunity could be a clause or part in it, anyway. Thank you.
There's, uh, thank you, Maureen, there's a.
Oh, that was me, actually.
In the chat?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I believe at this point, everybody has spoken once, so the four remaining hands.
Okay.
Have. Start at the top again.
Yep, and again, we've got a couple more policies to go through, so we're gonna let you speak again, but please, new, new topics, please. Or new, new points. Thank you.
Okay, first up is Allison Camara, if you can unmute and state your name and address again.
Hi, Allison Lehman Camara, 398 Long Highway. So I'm glad that we are discussing the vax mandate. I'm hoping that you will take into consideration dropping the mandate so all parents can enter the school and attend all activities, whether it's first thing in the morning, in the middle of the afternoon, or after-school. If you do require people still wearing masks because folks are unvaccinated, if that makes you feel more comfortable to let the unvaccinated parents in the building, to have them be masked, or have them do a rapid test to prove that they are negative, you know, we don't want the parent, we don't want the teachers to feel uncomfortable, they're teaching our children. We want them to feel comfortable, we as parents want to meet our teachers face-to-face and have that connection because they're so important in our kids' lives. But unfortunately, the parents are feeling the, a huge disconnect with, without being let into the building and meet with their teachers. So I, I think it is, I agree with Jen Rocha and Maureen Aziz in regards to thinking outside the box, and there could be a conversation to have about natural immunity. Jen brought up in, in a community there was low vaccination rate, but also low COVID outbreak, so I feel that there is a conversation to be had about something in those lines. And that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you.
Up next is Amanda Morton, if you can unmute yourself and state your name and address again.
Amanda Morton, 20 Patersville Road. So I just wanted to make a comment in regards to the IEP meetings. I recently had one over Zoom, and Mr. McKinnon can acknowledge that it was really difficult for me to hear what was going on in the meeting, so the Mrs. Stoller actually had to grab another computer to talk to me, but I will say that for a parent going into the school to have an IEP meeting compared to having it through Zoom, it's definitely not as beneficial, and it's really hard to understand and grasp what's going on in that meeting because you don't have, like, it's just hard, I don't know, I just found it a lot harder, plus like the internet was going in and out, so like, it's just, especially when it comes to something that important. I don't think that, you know, an IEP meeting should be done through Zoom. Another thing that I just, I'm a little confused about is, I guess that everybody's trying to be safe, but you're saying that you want to ask the teachers about their comfortability. They're in school all day with our children. We're not vaccinated and they're not vaccinated, so I don't understa, I'm like a little confused about that, like, asking the, asking the teachers how they feel about letting the unvaccinated parents come in after-school, how they feel about that, well, they're with our children all day, the children aren't vaccinated, and we're not vaccinated, so if they're gonna catch something, they're gonna catch it regardless. So, I mean, that just doesn't really make very much sense to me, and the last thing I wanted to say was, in the event that you guys do end the vaccine policy to where it ends at 3:30, can we make sure that all school events start after that time? So this way that we can attend them, because my son just came home today and said he's gonna be in a play, and I will be really upset if I don't get to see him be in his first play. That's all.
Thank you. I think the Superintendent and I, probably after she reaches out to Mrs. Dunn, or I don't know, we're gonna look into testing and see how feasible it is, we want to make sure before we entertain it too much that we have the capabilities to do it.
Jen Rocha, if you can unmute yourself and state your name and address again.
Hi, Jen Rocha, 105 Willow, I know you won't have the answer for this, it's just something for Polly to put on her pad. To piggyback off Kristy, you have kindergarten screenings coming up, usually done during the school day, how are you going to address the kids that are not vaccinated? Those five-year-olds that are on the bubble? Something to think about, you know, if they're coming in during the school day. I know for my family, my granddaughter, who's an incoming kindergartner, after discussion with her pediatrician, after some recent health crisis, they've decided that it's best to hold off on the vaccine, is she going to be able to go to her kindergarten screening? She can come in as a kindergartner in September without the vaccine, but something to think about, because I'm sure she's not alone. And the other thing is, I know I'm not part of your committee, but I am a school nurse in a large inner-city school, and I can give you lots of suggestions on how to do the testing, so you have my address on file.
Thank you, Jen.
Up next is Hope Burchard, if you can unmute yourself.
Hi, I, oh, Hope Burchard, 105 Amesbury Lane. I just wanted to quickly add to my comments earlier. It is about the IEP meetings, I will have one coming up, I have had them in the past over Zoom, and they are very ineffective, it's difficult to hear, as the previous speaker said. And I would encourage you, when you're going through all of this policy rewriting, as Lori had said, it's going to take two reads to get anywhere. Please include this now, so that it can, you can help the children who are most at risk in your school. Thank you.
Thank you. So to clarify the two reads, the two reads are at the school committee level, so we would bring policy to the school committee, and they would vote. They would listen once, what, first read with the school, whole school committee, and then the second read vote.
Next is Shannon, if you can unmute yourself and state your full name and address, please.
Hey, so Shannon Mitchell, 41 Old Main Road. Just had a few, you know, this is more directed to Lori Dias directly. Lori, you know, back in September when Kale had an incident at the school, you told me, and I quote, because I wrote it down, that parents that were not vaccinated would have, it would go through you, and you'd figure something out. would have, it would go through you and you'd figure something out based on the situation. What happened?
Shannon, I, I'm not quite sure what you're referencing, but I think you're referencing.
Let me be clear, just let me be clear. So Kale was subjected to pornographic material back in September. I felt like it might be necessary to pull the boys and not have Jamison go into kindergarten. I asked you in that conversation, what would be, what would come from parents going into the school that were not vaccinated? And I quote you, and you said, we will evaluate per situation depending on what the issue was or what the event was. And you never, that never happened. So I want to know what happened since then.
I think you're referencing, there's a, uh, an area of the policy uh, for visitors, vendors, volunteers and on, uh, and non-union employees. Um, but there is a, a section of the policy that says to superintendent, in the case of an emergency.
No, 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 no. You're backpedaling on me. You told me verbatim. I said, I really feel like I should pull the boys from the school system at this point. And you said to me, I wrote it down, Lori, that we will address each sit, each parent in each situation accordingly. And I said, well, I really want, don't want to lose out on Alexander in his eighth grade year. And you said, that will not happen. And you said, and I quote, because I wrote it down, please do not pull the boys. And now I have, not only did I miss out on all Kale, well, watching Kale and Alexander play basketball together, I'm missing out on eighth grade events that I shouldn't miss out. You put, everyone for the science fair was in a little room, you know, at the main office, you, again, exposing everyone, oh, they're not vaccinated, they're not vaccinated, oh, that family's not vaccinated. Like this, you, what you're doing to, not, not just you, Lori, let me just rephrase. What's happening in this community is not a community. Once they're children, you have no community. And I feel like, what is gonna happen when you have parents in Little Compton and some of their children go to Portsmouth and some kids go to Little Compton? And they're sitting down, they're having dinner and the little boy or the little girl, the sister, the brother, whatever, says, oh, I don't have to wear a mask tomorrow, I'm so excited. And the other little kid says, oh, I can't believe it. I'm so, I, I still have to wear a mask in Little Compton.
I have about 20 seconds to say no.
What are you, what are, how are you preparing anything for these parents to say, hey, you know, it's not fair to them? And what you did to me isn't fair either, Lori.
Shannon. You and I will have a conversation. I will call you at your convenience next week. I was following policy and, uh, the policy does state in an emergency situation.
Thank you. And we're, you know, hopefully we're, we're moving, um, in a direction where there's going to be more opportunity for, um, more people in the buildings, um, in, in the building and, um, more events, hopefully.
Um, up next is Matt Nicole. If you can unmute yourself and state your name and address, please.
Thanks very much. Uh, Matt Nicole, 40B Old Main Road. Uh, I wanted to try to combat some anchoring that I'm hearing. And by that, I mean, currently we're debating a thing that exists instead of talking about where we should go. Um, I would like to state clearly a position which I haven't heard yet. One, repeal the vax mandate for visitors. Two, repeal the vax mandate for non-union employees. Three, repeal the vax mandate for union employees. There should be no testing requirement. There should be no natural immunity requirement. There should be no mask requirement. Thank you.
And the last hand up is, uh, Kim with no last name. If you can unmute yourself and state your full name and address, please. Are you there, Kim? We should be able to unmute.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you now. Uh, could we, you state your, uh, name and address?
Sure, Kimberly Chardier, 9 High Meadow Road. I just, I'm not sure how many school teachers there are at the school exactly, but you make a point about saying how you don't want to put the teachers in a position that make them feel uncomfortable. But you're putting the kids in a position that make them feel uncomfortable. It's been over two years. You're putting parents in uncomfortable positions. Test not to test, vaccinated not to vaccinate, mask not to wear mask. There's so many decisions, it's absolutely out of control. I, I, I mean, if it wasn't for the kids and the parents, there would be no one for the teachers to even teach in the school. And I just hope that you're prepared or at least thinking along the lines. There are 17 children in that school who's have parents that are thinking of pulling them out all at one time. So I just want to make sure that you're prepared for that, that those 17 children maybe don't matter as much as the teachers or what other decisions that you're making. So I just wanted to throw that out on the table. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mother's gift for hands.
That's it for hands. All right. So I will, I'll be circling back around to some of the questions that have, um, been brought up in this meeting with the superintendent and whoever else we need to follow up to see, how, how it would work out with a test option, um, and if we have the ability to do that. Um, and then, um, I'll reach out to the policy committee again and see, when we might be able to meet on those issues. But we're not done with policy yet.
I have a question.
Do you have, Hannah, do you have something to say?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. My first question would be, then, um, are we planning to bring this back to the subcommittee before we bring it to a first read for the committee?
I would, I would think that would be best. I know that I was gonna get my, I don't, I can't remember off the top of my head when the, um, next meeting is, but not that we'll schedule it now. I just wanna, um.
Our next full committee meeting is March 9th.
Yep. So we have a, a couple of weeks, I guess. I know it's hard to, but we'll, um, we'll start the scheduling, um, process soon, I guess, and see what we have available, all of us.
Okay. And then my next, um, question, um, no, I think it's more of a comment, but I just wanted to kind of reiterate again, my support for the testing option. And I hope that we can work something like that out because I think it was, Amanda Morton who brought it up about Zoom and internet and Little Compton is some of the worst internet connection I've ever experienced. And I think that that, um, while Zoom may be perfectly fine for others, it's not for others. So, um, just again, to reinforce my position on, I'm totally in favor of testing in lieu of vaccination until we do repeal this policy completely.
Thanks, Hannah. Okay, on to personal management system policy is, I think Carolyn is going to talk to us about this, if I'm correct. Or is it Lori? Is it you, Lori?
Uh, Carolyn needs to be elevated to panelist status. And I'm wondering if Mariah has the revised policy? Thank you. Carolyn, are you still here?
I'm here.
Okay.
I'll show you. Hold on, let me just get my video on. Okay. Uh, thank you, Mariah. Uh, the personnel management system areas that we want to look at tonight, if you could please scroll down a little, Mariah, um, we did go in and make some edits. In the existing policy, at the beginning of the pandemic, one thing that, um, was put into place almost as an emergency procedure was an increase in our substitute rates. For those coming in to substitute in the teacher assistant capacity, they were paid at the rate of 125 a day. For those coming in to substitute for a certified teacher, that rate was 135 a day. As the pandemic continued, uh, so did our substitute compensation rates. So here we are now in 2022 and we felt that we needed to bring this to the policy subcommittee to have the policy reflect what is actually happening day to day at Wolver McMahon School when it comes to compensating our subs. So the edits are in front of you. We've also proposed adding the rate, should we need to call upon someone with a building level administrator certificate? In the rare event that neither the principal nor the superintendent is available to school staff during a school day, it is essential that we have access to someone with that certification. To bring someone in, we would, um, like to do that at 400 a day. If it is a member of our current teaching staff who happens to have that certificate, we would like the ability to reimburse that person. We would take their daily rate and compensate them the difference between that and the rate of the current administrator. So those are the additions to the policy and it brings us up to date with current practice.
And Madam Chair, if I may, it, you may recall the fall of 2020. I did, um, exercise my, um, right and agency regarding, um, negotiating on an emergency basis with a substitute that is part of your policy. And I did inform you of that in writing and, and the emergency never went away. And here we are, uh, a year and a half later and we would like to codify those changes. We feel, um, our pay rate, which is much higher than area districts, is absolutely responsible for our having enough subs generally. We could always use more. We're constantly advertising. So anyone on this Zoom call, uh, please contact Carolyn Cedric if you have 60 credits or more to, you know, be a classroom teacher sub. And if you don't have 60 credits, you can still be a TA sub, taking a, um, mini course and then a quick assessment afterwards. So I'm plugging, I need for substitutes. So we need to fold this into permanent, um, policy language and we appreciate your support in that.
All right, excellent. Hannah, do you have any questions? Don't worry.
Um, no, I think if that's what uh, is needed, then that's what's needed. So I trust, um, Carolyn and Lori's judgment on that.
Yep.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you both. School committee bylaws. So we have school committee bylaws that we recently reviewed. We, we did make a few edits and changes. There were some odd wording that the attorney helped us with. And just, uh, updated it. In some searching through old policies, um, I found rules of conduct, school committee procedures, which I believe was the old, um, school committee policies. Or bylaws that, um, were never retired. They are so similar. Um, there are some things that may be outdated in here. Um, I don't believe that there's anything of importance in the, um, older document that is not in the newer document. Um, I, for the life of us, we can't, uh, we can't quite figure out, um, what, wh-what happened to this policy. But it just sort of, I, I think it must have, it was supposed to be retired when the bylaws were made and it wasn't. Hannah, have, do you see any changes? Anything that's in the, um, in this older policy that should be in the newer policy that didn't get bumped over? That's important.
Um, you're talking about when I go to these draft policies, the section that says school committee procedures and all of those things that are under it?
Yes, like it's, it's named rules of conduct, but then the document itself says school committee procedures.
Yeah, I don't, I didn't read anything that looked like we hadn't already included it. Um, and it seems some of it doesn't even seem like actual policy stuff.
Right.
Yeah.
So, um, I would recommend that we put the, I want to get the name right because it has a couple of different names here. So I guess we'll call it, um, code, the one with the code 1007, Mariah, um, rules of conduct or school committee procedures. If we could put that on the next school committee meeting for a vote to retire. Does that seem like a good idea, Hannah?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think even our bylaws go even further than this.
Oh, I, I believe like our bylaws are way more, what, we have seven pages of bylaws. Yeah.
I know, I got scared when I saw that on the agenda. I was like, again? We've done the whole thing again.
Right, but, um, this is ju-, this, these procedures are just, um, causing confusion, I think, or, or could cause confusion in the future. And, um, I really can't find anything of importance that should be, um, that's not listed in the actual bylaws. So.
I, I agree.
Just as a form of some housekeeping. Okay, excellent. Um, all right, we're back to public agenda. Anyone have anything else left to say? We all question now. Oh, one more.
And here. Okay, Andrew Ryan, you can unmute yourself and state your name and address, please.
Andy Ryan, 40 Pageant Brook Road. Sorry to, sorry to ask a question at the end of the meeting. This is actually totally, I think the only place I could ask this question because it's not related to the other topic. So, um, I would just like to, that if you could, um, maybe look at, um, developing some policies around what access and doors you use when there's inclement weather versus non-inclement weather for kids to get into s-, to school. Um, I'm sure an eighth grader can hop out of a car and get, but, pretty easily, but two kindergartners, uh, we have enough trouble getting our kids to school anyway, out the door on time. And, and it's, uh, pretty, been pretty challenging with all the snow because the snow wasn't removed. I know that was addressed, but, but there seems to be some kind of change that's happened with access to the building or the way kids are dropped off. That's happened recently in the last month or so. But I don't think, I don't know if the school committee has anything to do with that, but, um, it might be something, since it's the policy meeting, to, to look at that.
Thank you. I do know that there is, um, hopefully I'll get the name right, an emergency management team. I think maybe is kind of close to what the name of the team is. And it involves, um, fire, police, um, uh, building principal, superintendent, myself, um, I think head teachers. And the topic is on, um, drop-off policy. We, we are gonna have a conversation around the drop-off, um, procedure more so, but maybe a policy is needed. Um, so that would be coming up soon. Um, and we can certainly bring that up in that meeting.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Um, Mr. McKinnon, did you have something to add to that?
No, I was, I was just gonna address Mr. Ryan. Yeah, there are, on the days where we've had inclement weather, we have moved the kids, you know, directly indoors. The, uh, kids can always come in the main entry door, which is by the gymnasium, and then they go to their particular, uh, areas of the building. However, uh, that's, you know, that's when the weather is inclement, whether it's raining out or the, the weather is below 25 degrees, we try to keep them outside as long as the, the pathways are cleared and it's, and it's warm enough out there. We try to keep them outside for the first few minutes until we can, uh, get the staff in place. But in climate weather, we gotta bring them inside.
Thank you.
I might have cut him off early and, and drew.
Okay.
Raise his hand again. So if you want to unmute yourself again, sorry about that.
So, no, that's okay. I'm sorry. Just to clarify, I, I love the fact that they're outside before school starts. I think that's awesome. Right? Uh, no, I'm talking about how you actually get them. Uh, no, I'm talking about how you actually get them out of the car and into the building. That's changed dramatically recently. I'm talking about how we actually drop them off, not the fact that they line up outside. I think that's just a brilliant idea instead of like, wow, it's just nice to be outside in the morning. Um, but, but it, it seems like. When there's bad weather, like people are parking all over the place. Um, and there doesn't seem to be a consistent, like, it seems things have changed recently around that. And, and maybe it's just something that can be looked at.
Terrific. Uh, uh, thank you. And I think it is going to be looked at. I'm, I'm fairly certain that's the um, focus of the meeting next month.
That safety meeting, correct?
Yes.
If I may, it is the Tuesday that we, we, after we return from vacation.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Uh, one more hand.
Okay.
Uh, Kristen Moniz, if you can unmute yourself and state your name and address again, please.
Yep, Kristen Moniz, two oh eight Long Highway, Little Compton. Can you just clarify, Polly, um, the procedure in which? All of these changes are to be made. So this is considered the first reading revisions and then there needs to be a second reading? And then it needs to go to the formal larger body school committee? Is that correct?
No, so.
I'm confused.
Yep, it's, it's, um, it's not our policy. It's, you know, it's the way. It's, it's, it's how our policy committee works within our uh, committee. So um, we bring a suggestion um, to the policy, to the, sorry, to the whole committee.
Okay.
And that, and um, at a, at a formal public meeting. And that is considered a first read.
So how many times does it need to be read in order to be voted on? Two times?
This, at the second reading, it is also voted on.
So.
Or it could be voted on. Sometimes people will um, not want to vote. They'll want something changed. They'll want, that's, that's the quickest it could, it could be.
Would, so you would meet on the ninth and then you'd have to meet again? Would you be meeting before the ninth in between? Because it's almost three weeks until that. Date and all of the parents and families are going to be asking lots of questions about the mask mandates.
So I, I know that um, we've already discussed here tonight that we're going to try to meet as a um, policy committee. To get some of, um, once we get some of these questions answered around um, opt-out testing and kindergarten. And uh, you know, some other questions that were brought up here, how we can make them work. Um, so we will do that. I am not sure if we're going to be able to fit in um. Us, I, I, I'm almost positive we're not going to be able to fit in another school committee meeting in there, but we have the ninth. Um, and then I, I'm guessing the school committee, I mean, I always speak for me, but I'm guessing the school committee would be open to having a special meeting. Um, to approve policies that, we have done that before around other policies and not waiting until. April. If we have some changes in those policies, um, that the school committee wants to see faster than the April meeting. Um, we have that ability as a committee to decide to have a special meeting so that we could have the second reading and vote. Think that, is that clear?
Yeah, that makes sense. I thought it was twice, I thought it was twice with you guys, but, but it makes more sense the way you explained it. And I just want to piggyback on the other people who spoke that have kids in Portsmouth. That I don't know how you should be explaining to your kids that one school district is going mass choice and one isn't. And I really think it's going to be really hard and confusing on the students. And if we could be very proactive and work on the meetings as soon as possible, it would be greatly appreciated. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, the last hand up is Sarah Patico Lebec. Should be able to unmute and state your name and address, please.
Uh, one peck of Sarah, she go like, one heck of a little, little content. Um, I just had a question on the subcommittee. Is that just school committee members or would you consider doing a subcommittee that incorporated? You know, parents administration, school committee? Um, I don't know if it's possible to throw that together.
The policy subcommittee is um, two members of the school committee and it is Hannah and I right now.
Okay.
I believe that's the last of the hands.
Are we good? Anyone, um, Hannah, are you good with questions?
I don't have any more questions.
Okay, awesome. John Anderson, you look like you want to say something now? Okay. Alright, with no more questions, um. We are going to consider, I will consider a motion to approve the December second policy subcommittee meeting minutes. I'll second it. And we'll, uh, I guess we'll vote by roll call because we're virtual, please.
Polly, aye.
Aye.
Can I aye?
Aye.
All in favor? Terrific. And um, now consider a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second that.
I'll second that. Alright, um, all in favor? Oh, sorry, sorry. Aye.
Aye.
Super. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, meetings adjourned at eight forty.
Good night.
Thank you, Polly. Thank you, everybody, for coming.
Thank you all.